Recording and we are live on Zoom, open to the public.
Good evening, everyone. I'm reconvening the public meeting of the Coventry Town Council at 6:54 PM. Welcome to members of the public. I believe Mr. Luke Murray will be with us and Mr. Phil Conti is with us from Studio J and he'll present on the Coventry Building Committee proposal. Mr. Wazik, how many members of the public are with us this evening?
Totally have 12, 13 in climbing.
13 and climbing, great. Madam Clerk, please do a roll call of the council.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. For A's, no no's, the motion to adjourn from executive session passes. For members of the public, the council met an executive session for the following. Per Rhode Island General Law 42465A1, Discussion of Job Performance, Character, Physical, or Mental Health of a Person or Persons, specifically for the council to interview candidates for the town manager position, and per Rhode Island General Law 42465A1, Session pertaining to Discussions of Job Performance, Character, Physical, or Mental Health of a Person or Persons, specifically for the discussion on the interim acting town manager contract. I'd love to announce that no votes were taken. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. For A's, no no's, the motion passes. The motion to seal the minutes of the executive session passes. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I-
Mike, would you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Just to announce that I will open public comment for 10 minutes after the Coventry Building Committee presentation and I will at the end of the meeting. We are now in agenda item C2, a presentation by Mr. Luke Murray. Mr. Murray is on the Coventry School Committee and the chairperson of the Coventry Building Committee. Mr. Murray, would you like to introduce the members of Studio J who are with you this evening?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. So I'm here with Mr. Phil Conti from Studio Jade, our architect for the Stage Two building effort. Before we start, I just want to thank you and the fellow members of council tonight. I know you've probably had a full agenda. So we'll try to keep it as brief but as informative as possible. But I do want to give recognition to the building committee who worked very hard on this effort and included the two council members who were part of that effort, the school committee members, fellow school administration members, and five community members who were all made up that committee. We've worked extremely hard with Studio Jade over the past several months, or actually I should say over the past year. To come up with this stage to report, Phil's going to outline the details of now and I urge you to take notes and ask any questions that you have when we're done. Without further ado, I'll pass it over to you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. If it's okay, I would like to share my screen.
Phil, are you able to? You can't, do you have permission?
Not, not yet. It just says host disabled.
You got it, Phil.
Great, thank you. Okay, so everyone see the title slide?
Yes.
Great, well, thank you for having me here this evening. We have a robust agenda because what this presentation concerns is the submission of the RIDE Stage Two application to the state for consideration of school construction and improvement projects. I would like to review with you first the checklist that is part of the Stage Two document. It is a voluminous document that has a lot of backup information and that information is work that's generated through a series of meetings that we've had, presentations, work that the school committee has assembled, that the town council has provided in terms of its guidance and participation in financing plans. And hopefully you had a chance to review the executive summary. If, if you have not, following this presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I'd like to also talk about what are the needs in Coventry Public Schools that started this investigation and how we are going to resolve these issues? What was the reasoning behind our approach? What is the scope of work? What is the schedule? What are the costs? And how do the incentives from the state bond that was passed overwhelmingly for school construction and those incentives are available throughout the entire state? And I'd certainly like to see Coventry have access to them. We'll briefly touch on the educational specifications and the architectural program that influenced the largest project in this campaign, which is a revitalization of the Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School. And then we'll finish with some discussions on financing. So the Stage Two checklist is two-part. This first slide identifies the common items that they ask for. Most importantly is the project summary and prioritization. They want to know what are you doing? And what are the priorities? And that included most of our executive summary that we submitted to you. The architectural feasibility study includes backup documentation from local jurisdictions, discussions with the staff and the administration. The schematic design documents are construction documents that we prepare so that a design and construction cost estimate can be developed by a third party and submitted to RIDE for consideration. They want to know that the projects that you have developed were documented sufficiently enough that accurate cost estimates could be developed for their consideration for reimbursement and project approval. The financing plan is part of the submission. Local support is what we are here tonight to solicit. They ask for timelines and some commissioning and other owner project management agent service commitments that you would need to engage if you were to move forward into Stage Three. The second part of the checklist are just some items that they asked for additional clarification on. They want to know that we have exercised due diligence in meeting with the building committee and the administration, that we are complying with regulatory agencies, that we have managed the, the energy use in the buildings and took that into consideration as we looked at projects. And most importantly, conducted a utilization analysis to understand how the buildings are utilized because that does relate to one of the incentives that you will be pursuing. So in the beginning, well over a year ago, we started this journey and we looked at what are the needs for Coventry Public Schools? Well, we know in working with the building committee and the building principals and administration, at the elementary schools, it's going to be important to protect those assets. At all of the schools, it's important for us to look into projects that are defined by the acronym HIVE, H-I-V-E, which is High Impact Visual Enhancements. We know that there are site improvements needed at all schools. We know that ADA improvements are needed at all schools. We know that there are some NEAS deficiencies at the high school that need to be addressed. In talking to the administration, the science lab department really needed some improvements at the high school and the middle school to be reimagined. If you recall, the middle school was never designed as a middle school. It has had a number of additions that were maybe not the best thought out approach. And the middle school is suffering from some ongoing legacy issues that your maintenance department has continually tried to work on and improve. But it is probably time that the middle school project get a lot more attention. So the reasoning behind our approach started with wanting to have an equitable student impact to all the students in Coventry. We know that the ability for facilities to impact curriculum is very high and that those facilities need to support that, both currently and in the future. One of the things we heard from many people throughout this process is how important the teachers are to Coventry and that is one of their strengths. So teacher recruitment and teacher retention is critical. And we know that at this particular time in Coventry, that it's going to be important to gain the community confidence and trust in local support in taking on such a significant project. We looked at a number of approaches. One was district-wide deferred maintenance. What if all we did was address district-wide deferred maintenance, work that really needs to be done over the next 10 years? That was over $56 million. Unfortunately, that's work that the students and staff and community really wouldn't see. Next was because of that deferred maintenance, could we reduce that if we were to maybe consolidate some of the like elementary schools into one new building and went through with the deferred maintenance? That is an excellent idea. The, the cost of that is upwards of almost $100 million. But at this particular time, it didn't seem like to be the project that would be most impactful to all of Coventry students. Therefore, enter the middle school project, another significant project. But reimagining the middle school does impact all the students in Coventry. We're also able to address those high school improvements that were noted and then the deferred maintenance, not all of it, but a portion of it that will allow you to continually protect the asset of those elementary schools. It is not uncommon for many communities to have major needs. Coventry is no different. But through a prudent analysis and study, you choose a path that is most impactful and that was the path that we've selected and that is an $85 million campaign. So what are the, some of the project scopes of work that you could expect to see? Well, we know we wanted an equitable distribution to have the greatest student impact and we knew that it's important to protect the asset and also execute minor and major improvement projects. So we've identified the schools in the left-hand column and we have identified scopes of work across the top of this chart. And we indicated where we will be doing that particular type of work at that particular school. So we have put an emphasis on those high-impact visual enhancements because they do impact the morale of the students and staff. There are select MEP improvements that we can make. There are ADA improvements that need to be made and those site improvements that I mentioned throughout the entire district are planned to be executed. You see at the high school, the NEAS improvements and the educational enhancements are included at that particular school. The educational enhancements are going to occur in the science department area. And then the Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School project. That project will include partial demolition, significant renovation, significant addition, site improvements, obviously projects to keep the students warm, safe, and dry in the existing building, and educational enhancements. The project schedule is very important. Two things we want to keep in mind. Number one, we want to limit student and staff disruption. Number two, we want to maximize those incentives, our buying power, and the bidding opportunities. As you can see, we've identified when a potential bond vote could occur and the type of work that would need to happen over the next five years by quarters. It's important to keep in mind that the work that we've identified from Hopkins Hill, Ty Oak, Black Rock, Washington Oak, Western Coventry, and Coventry High School, that type of work wants to happen in the summer. Not all of it will be completed, but a significant part wants to start and be done during the summertime. The height, the middle school project has a targeted start date in quarter four of 2022. That is absolutely critical because at the end of 2022, the incentives for educational enhancements and the incentives for health, safety deficiency expire. Work must commence before quarter four of 2022 to recognize those additional incentive points. So why are these incentive points so important? We're identifying the estimated project cost for each school in this chart. We're also identifying the three categories of incentives that you qualify for. For example, the health, safety, and deficiency incentive that would allow you to qualify for five additional points. All of your projects meet that. The second incentive is for educational enhancements for an additional five percentage points. And as you can see here, the project at the middle school and the project at the high school both qualify for that. The third column is to decrease utilization. If you recall, I referenced the utilization analysis in the beginning of our presentation. Through analysis and discussions and looking at the information that RIDE has provided, we have charted a path where you are eligible for this incentive point of another 5% because that project at the middle school will qualify for that. The goal is to maximize your incentive points. And as you could see here, we are projecting 15 percentage points above your base reimbursement if you package all of these projects together as one project. And as I mentioned, we're looking at about an $85 million campaign. I want to briefly touch on the educational specifications and the architectural program that was developed for the middle school, which as you saw in the previous slide is the largest project at about $75 million. We're looking for enrollment of about 1,200 students, grades six through eight. There are four teams per grade. We're looking at a building when complete will be 197,000 square feet. But I want to call your attention to the RIDE guideline that says a new middle school for 1,200 students would only be 192,000 square feet. So the question is, well, what is happening? What has happened is that the original middle school was designed as a high school. So it has an full, an auditorium, a larger gym. It has facilities that you would not normally get in a new middle school. So use that to your advantage. We will, we will provide information for all these space variances in our Stage Two. The educational specifications were provided for all grade levels and we worked with the teachers and administration in developing that program. One thing that we did learn, that you do have a robust special education program and a career path and career exploration program at the middle school and, and that should be celebrated in any new design. I want to show you a site plan of the new middle school and a couple of things that I want to point out. For all intent and purpose, we are flipping the main entrance to the middle school. By demolishing the addition in the back and demolishing what you call Guam and placing our new addition there, reworking the site to have safe parent and bus drop-off, we are moving the entrance to the other side. We're putting in a new synthetic field to take up the space that was, to, to make up for the baseball fields that were removed. But we're thinking more strategically and long-term in that on this parcel, you have the opportunity to create a campus. And maybe in the future, it is not part of this program, but in the future, maybe a connection from Station Street that we tried to articulate by removing the trees can come into the site so that you have access to this site from multiple points. We talked about the elementary school consolidation. That is on your horizon and it would be smart for us to plan for a long-term impact, which is why we've made some of the moves that we have made here at the site. This is the first floor plan of the middle school and in the upper left-hand corner are the second and third floor of the addition. At a very high level, you could imagine the addition being your main entrance on the first floor, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, on the three floors above, broken up into teams like they currently are and moving the kitchen and cafeteria to where it was originally, which is at the other end of the building now at your current front entrance and creating an addition there. Gym and PE functions would remain where they are. The arts and auditorium would remain where they are. We would use the existing administration area for guidance. We would move special education, although it's dispersed throughout the academic addition. You have some very robust programs. We would move down towards guidance. So there's direct access to the parking lot that's back there. And we would create a, a new hub in the middle school. You can see in the connector, parents and would be dropping off and picking up students to the right and bus would be picking up and dropping off students to the left. They would come into a central location and from there, they could be dispersed throughout the building. And I'd be happy to answer any particular question in detail about the plan. Lastly, I want to talk about the financing strategy behind the $85 million campaign. We're looking at a total project budget of $85 million. The state pay-go amount is approximately 7.75 million, which means a possible bond amount would be approximately 77.25 million. It's important to understand that people are going to ask all of us, what, what's in it for me? While for parents with very young children about to enter the system, they should know that their elementary schools are going to be warm, safe, and dry. For parents with children going into the high school, they should know that you're making an investment in academic spaces and in athletic spaces. And for all the elementary school children, they should know that they are about to enter a state-of-the-art middle school that will impact all of Coventry's children and it will rival any middle school that has been recently built in Rhode Island. And for those people who don't have children and for those that do, they have the opportunity for a generational effect for decades to come to Coventry. And with that brings additional community resources, improved student performance, economic stimulus, increased home values, and as I mentioned before, the ability to attract the best talent. So someone could say, okay, I want all of that. What will it cost me? Very fair question. It's important to keep in mind that the incentives significantly impact the state reimbursement. So if we are to get all 15 percentage points, which we are confident you can, your state reimbursement rate would be 57.8. But keep in mind, those incentives expire in December of 2022 if construction does not start. So let's look at current residential assessed value and let's look at the tax increase spread out over a number of fiscal years. Let's start with an example of $200,000. The tax increase for fiscal year 2022 increases by $6. In 2023, it increases by $20. In 2024, where you have maximized your borrowing and paid for construction of this new middle school and all the other work throughout the district, there's a $134 increase. And then in fiscal year 25, there's an $8 decrease. So the total tax increase is $152. We have a couple other examples at 250,000. Another example at 300,000. In this scenario, Coventry's share of the $85 million bond would be 36 million. And because of the 57.8 state reimbursement, the state pays 49 million. And in this particular situation, you are the winner. Someone could say, well, what if we wait a year, uncertainty, COVID, other reasons? That's fine. Your base reimbursement at 42.8% is where you would be, maybe. The scopes of work we know will increase and the cost will increase. And as you saw in 2018, where your reimbursement went from 44% to 42.8%, your housing aid reimbursement may be further reduced. And in this particular scenario, Coventry now pays 49 million dollars and the state 36. So that concludes my presentation. I will stop sharing and I can open up slides as we need to, to answer any questions.
Okay, what questions do members of the council have for Mr. Murray or Mr. Conti?
This is Shockley.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I just wanted to go to the slide that says, I think Coventry pays 36 million, the state pays 49 million. So does that mean that, and I know that what we're voting on tonight doesn't authorize any money, but does that mean we also only pay interest on 36 million? So we're not, we're not paying it on the rest because the state is paying principal? I don't know if that's too-
Sure. So let me get the slide back. Luke may also want to chime in because he's having discussions with bond council as well.
I just know cost is a large issue. I think a lot of people want this project, but I just want to make sure we're clear.
So it's a good question and Ed may want to lay on this as well because it's my understanding that they'll pay the interest down on that. Is that your understanding, Ed? When, when we spoke with PFM.
Yeah, the, the 49 million the state pays, my understanding on it is, if that is just off the principal, we would still be paying the, all of the interest off of this. That's the reimbursement on, on the payment. It actually still amounts to where the town would be paying more than the 36 total. It'd be-
Right. But we'd be paying interest on 36 million?
This is simply, no, on the full 85. This is simply the, the 85 million bond and how, how the, the principal's being paid. We would still pay all of the interest out of that, my understanding. We would still pay all of the interest out of that, my understanding.
Yeah, I'm not.
The interest on that is about, I believe, about 40 some million. So we would be paid about almost 85 all total. I believe we will get clarification to make sure which way that goes.
Because it does seem it might be similar to paying down your mortgage early. You're not paying as much interest because you are paying faster, but I don't know.
If you looked at PFM's calculation, they were doing a straight line without the interest. In my understanding, and when I talked to Steve Mastromonya, is that the state did pick up the interest because you're rolling it into a Ryback bond. So I will verify with him to make sure I get you an answer on that. But what we're voting on tonight, I don't think it's critical.
Nope, not at all. Just wondering.
Certainly bring up a good question and we want to get that answered. But in PFM's analysis, what they did have us picking up was the interest on the bands, the bond anticipation notes. Those are interest only for one year. You can take them for one year at a time. So we do need to pay the interest year over year. And that's why when you see these numbers go from very little to a very large number at one point, that's when we're really taking, we're rolling in the right in the Ryback those bands into a full bond at a higher interest rate. That can be, I don't want to get too in the weeds because there is certainly financial strategies that we can work with the town on to roll this over longer timeframes depending on the construction schedule. There are ways that we can spread this out over years so the tax rate impact isn't as detrimental year to year to the to the tax rate payers. So it wouldn't be such a large increase.
Yeah, so to build on that, we're not borrowing $85 million next year. We're borrowing for the part of the project we're starting and will borrow over these next.
So if we were to, the council were to authorize us to move forward and get the enabling legislation, the vote would prospectively happen in September of this year. But the actual debt wouldn't even start to get incurred really until fiscal year 23 and then start rolling year to year. So I believe I provided the the PFM summary and you can see in their period schedule really doesn't hit until 23. And again, how far we drag this would be a discussion with our financial advisor and how we roll this in as part of a larger tax strategy. So there's ways we can decrease the impact for sure.
Thank you.
Other members of the council with questions? Mrs. Shockley, Ms. Shockley.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ludwig.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Murray and Mr. Conti for being here. I think the last time we met, if I remember correctly, versus this time in the documentation provided and some of the snapshots and things that you've been talking about, is the main difference, the fields and the external parts of what you were just showing us? So you had showed us a draft of, I'm sorry, I don't know what slide it was, but what the likely structure will look like in the fields. Is that the main difference between the materials tonight versus maybe a month ago when we met last?
Yeah, so so from when we last last met, I believe there's some small interior changes after Phil had consulted with the administrators and teachers at the middle school. There was some tweaks that he made. And I know the the common space at the entry of the school got broadened up. Phil, I don't know on the classroom spaces. I know you integrated some of the special ed.
Correct, yeah. So we started to fine tune the floor plans, working in the location of special education classrooms to suit their program as well as, at one time, we had a courtyard in here and that has been removed and consolidated to create more of this larger student centric space where students could be a large amount of students, right? 1,200 student school can comfortably enter, exit, circulate through and get to the remaining parts of the building. We obviously started to fine tune the use of some of the existing spaces within the existing school for that career path program that we talked about and the special education programs that we talked about. And in terms of the site development, we spent a little bit more time studying how to effectively lay the groundwork for the best layout of the existing building with the new entrance, making sure that we have not boxed ourselves into anything, giving you the most flexibility in the future as well as providing the the site amenities, not only to the school but to the community as well.
And it's important to note, too, that the site plan, we we spent a lot of time on the interior and there's a lot of time to prospectively spend additional on the interior development in a stage three. We spent less time on the site development, but we needed to lay it out in some fashion where we could cost estimate. So while we see a field here, we see some parking layout and the bus, the bus drop offs, it's likely to be tweaked in a stage three process. So we have to, we'll be ringing that out should we move forward much more as we advance architectural and site design.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Thank you, Mr. Conti, for your presentation. Really appreciate it. On the the slide that says, what will it cost me? My only concern with that slide is a couple of things. There's going to be a revale in between the years that you presented, 22 through 25, which obviously will skew the total tax increase. And then I didn't see anywhere in the presentation how long the bonds are actually going to be. I believe they're 25 or 30 years, but I'm not 100% sure on that. Maybe, Mr. Murray, maybe you know?
Yeah, so the term was 25 years calculation. You make a good point of revale, but the truth is that we're going to encounter quite a few revales during the term of this bond, right?
Oh, I agree.
So may increase our values if we experience another downturn, we could be seeing decreases. So there is going to be fluidity in any budget as we go. Keep in mind, once we ramp up and we build it into the budget by year, whatever it is, 26, 2026, 2027, you're carrying that amount forward. So it's just like any debt. At that point, any debt we have that's already on the books, prospectively, hopefully, is going to continue to fall off, right? So we have certain debt cliffs along the way that we will hit. So we'll be discussing more of that as we get in the months ahead because we're going to have to have a discussion on whether we want to take this to the voters. And so I want to get you the information you need.
Yeah, oh, I appreciate it, Mr. Murray. And this won't be our only project that we might need a bond for as well. So just want to make sure we don't max out in case we need some somewhere else. My only other concern is the length of the construction at the middle school. I think I brought it up before, but three full years just is concerning. But I think I asked the question, if we knew where the students were going to be placed during construction, has an ultimate decision been made about if they're going to be staying at the middle school or if they're going to be outside if we go forward?
So I'll I'll take that one. So so it's pertinent question because I literally had a discussion with Joe De Silva today on this. So we're still ringing this out. What Mr. De Silva from Ride, he's the, what would you call him? The head chief, I guess, yeah? We we have a very good relationship. I worked with in the past, I gave him a call. We had inquired because it was a sort of a interpretation by by Phil and others that the only thing that may be reimbursable would be modulators, which wouldn't be preferable to me and I know others in the building committee. When we posed that question, there was an email back from Mr. De Silva that was a little concerning, so I called him up. And it turns out Ride's not in favor of modulators. And quite frankly, neither am I. I think it's, you know, you put those in the parking lot and what they tend to see is that they tend to stay. And that's where program's going to get built into. So I've floated the idea in the past and we're looking at it of bringing certain amount of the students back into the old Washington Oak School, the current annex. That's potential discussion. We have to sit down with the town on that, kind of get a group of whether that makes sense. Keeping in mind, we wouldn't be displacing all the students at once. We would probably take down wings at a time. We may be able to keep some students active. Once we build that three story structure, we can get everyone back in while we're renovating the backend of the school. We might have to have temporary accommodation for small amounts of students or or some of the amenities like the cafeteria, depending how things go. But what what Mr. De Silva is requiring, and this may actually recoup us some additional monies because it could be additional up to $1 million, is a phasing plan. So Phil's been directed to provide us with a clear phasing plan on how each portion of that building would be demolished, how the students would transfer in and out from year to year, and then where would we displace them? So they said Wash, the old Washington Oak, I'll call it, is potentially in play. There's some logistics on that. If that doesn't work in discussions with the town, then we're going to have to find another suitable location that would work. But we have a little bit of time to to ring that out.
Appreciate the insight. Thank you.
Other questions from members of the council? Mr. Murray and Mr. Conti, I greatly appreciate the presentation tonight, even though I've seen it many times, it's a little bit different every time we see it. It it seems more improved, more detailed, and it has responded always to questions that people in previous sessions have asked. I am also concerned about the demolition of the middle school sections and what will happen to the students. I don't think that plan is really fully worked out and I don't like to see students disrupted and it becomes very costly to put them someplace else. So that is also a concern to me. But I, when I asked that question, I was told that that was built into the $85 million figure and that was to include the demolition, but also to really consider what we will do with our students. I'd just like to mention that Mrs. Shockley and I are both members of the Coventry Building Committee and I've been on it since the inception. So I've had an opportunity to attend all the focus groups that were held in the individual schools, the high school, the middle school, the elementary school. I had an opportunity to meet the staff, parents and community members who showed up at the focus groups, although I have to say it was disappointing to see so few people come. The sessions were very well organized and if you really wanted to understand and have some input into what you'd like for the your schools, there were opportunities. We also attended a tour that went through the high school, the middle school and the elementary schools. And and all the meetings, I have been, as everyone knows, a big supporter of improving the high school. So I was very happy to see that there will be some major improvements in the the high school science labs because they look like the ones that I attended a few years ago, so to speak. I am convinced of the need. There is a need for improvements in our school and I'm happy to see that there's equity so that the appropriate resolutions to the needs in all of the schools is being attended to. I also mentioned that I'm, I was very impressed with the challenge of this Studio J, Mr. Conti and his staff, and also the challenge that Mr. Murray has been able to assemble on the Coventry Building Committee. We actually have engineers, one person is a project manager, actually working on the project at the East Providence High School. So it's impressive, the talent that has been assembled for the Coventry Building Committee and the kind of thoughtful questions that the people have asked that have actually caused the evolution of this plan to the one that you see today. So and I'm also happy, of course, to learn about the Ride incentives. They seem to be working harmoniously with us. They seem to feel that Coventry is a community in which there should be investments by the state and that's a very good sign for anyone who wants to live in Coventry to know that the state is very interested in us. So I'm very happy to support their proposal to send this off to phase two. And I hope that the rest of the members will feel the same way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would like to open up to public comment, Mr. Wasika.
President Dixon wants, I I think we might want to just have a vote to add public comment to our agenda because it wasn't on the agenda in the first place. I mean, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. I did announce it, but I forgot to ask for the vote. So thank you for reminding me. And believe it or not, I attended a meeting on Robert's Rules of Order, as did three of us on the council. So this was not covered, but yes, thank you. May we have a motion to open public comment for 10 minutes on the proposal by the Coventry Building Committee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jennifer Logwig?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. Mr. Wasika, would you please open up our session to public comment?
If anybody would like to make comment on this, please raise your hand. We currently have no one raising their hand. We have 18 attendees from outside going a second time. Okay, we have a winner. When you come in, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your address for the record, please. Josh, I'm bringing you in. Please unmute.
I unmuted there?
You're you're unmuted.
Hear me well?
Yes. State your name, spell your last name.
Josh Clements, Tangent. Yep, Josh Clements, Tangent Farm Drive, C L E M E N T S. I guess I just have a question related to energy infrastructure, right? So maybe unrelated to schools, but within the town, there's a big push for solar development, wind development. I'd like to see that more on building. So the question I have is with respect to this school design, would it support solar on the roof or are there other HVAC concerns on the ceiling that would prevent that? Thank you.
So Phil, feel free to chime in, but the the short answer is we just struck a net solar agreement with a company called Pierce Energy at our last school committee meeting. And that allows us to take up to approximately 30% off our electric bill through the credits. Because it's an older roof on the other structure and we do have HVAC and other things, it may not be sensible to put panels solar on top of our roofs on a new bill, considering that we're already gaining substantial benefit. The footprint with the three story isn't extremely large. And Phil, what's your thoughts on that? That's my thinking.
So we usually like to address this issue when we go through the stage three part of the project. And we have to comply with what's called Northeast Chips, which is the Northeast Collaborative for High Performance Schools. And and it will ask us to conduct life cycle cost analysis and studies to see how we can use renewable resources. So we will certainly go through these exercises to see if they are economically feasible. And then you would design the structure appropriately. It's it's not uncommon to consider it obviously a new construction. Putting it on a existing buildings tends to not work as well. So we will address this issue. We will have to address this issue and we will have some real data to support that decision later.
That was a better answer, Phil. Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Ed, you're muted.
Sorry, does anyone else, would anyone else like to ask a question? Going once, going twice, one last time, if you'd like to ask a question, please raise your hand. Three times, Madam Chair, no one else?
Thank you. Public comment is closed. The vote to for this particular proposal is in item D3. I like the motion that we can move item D3 up to up to this particular time so that we can vote on this resolution that is reference page number nine. May I have a motion to move item D3 up to take the vote now?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jennifer Logwig?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the resolution which appears on page nine of
It is resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry hereby approves the submission of the Ride necessity of school construction stage two report as presented, passed and adopted this fifth day of February 2022. passed and adopted this fifth day of February 2021.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jennifer Lugwick?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. The resolution passes four to zero. Thank you so much, Mr. Murray. You're on your way to the next phase.
Yes, we are. Thank you all very much for your support, and I look forward to collaborating with you as we move forward.
We will continue to do so. Mr. Conti, thank you again for a very thorough presentation. As I said before, every time someone makes a comment, you responded, and you responded to those issues and questions, and it makes it very smooth for all members of the public in the council to follow the discourse. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please read Agenda Item C3?
President Dixon's update on rules of engagement between Town and School Department for fiscal year 2021-2022 budget work.
Thank you. This is just a statement about some things that we have been doing. The Town Council, and I'll give you the history. The Town Council was planning a joint meeting with the School Committee for December 30th, 2020, to begin discussions of the 21-22 budget. In planning for that meeting, our interim Town Manager, Mr. Wasika, and I discussed our goal to have these discussions be more productive and cooperative. In the past, there's been much tension between the two entities, meaning the Town Council and the School Committee, and we wanted, before the budget discussions on 21-22, to make these discussions much more harmonious, and also to make more harmonious any other discussions we may have between the two entities. So we decided that a joint meeting before the first budget session would be valuable. A meeting was held December 29th, 2020, and with top leaders in both entities, and a follow-up meeting was held on January 7th, 2021. Attendees included former Finance Director John Arnett, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Cowan, Superintendent Mr. Levis, Council Vice President Ms. Ludwig, interim Town Manager Mr. Wasika, School Committee Vice Chair Mr. Florio, School Committee Chair Mrs. Patno, Town Council President, that's me, and former Financial Director for the school, Ms. Mangerelli. The individuals in the group had an opportunity to express their feelings about previous interactions, and I have to tell you, it was very tense as we listened to the discussion. At one point, I think I said I could even see the tension coming through the Zoom meetings, and I wasn't, we weren't even all together in the same meeting room. After expressing these feelings, the group discussion involved into a very productive engagement. The group discussed the development of rules of engagement for the Coventry School Committee and the Coventry Town Council. Now, I would mention that Mrs. Patno, two weeks ago, in your school committee meeting, already told the School Committee about these rules of engagement. The term involved rules of engagement, the term involved during wartime to define the appropriate responses of military personnel engaged in combat. In public and workplace arena, the phrase often refers to agreements teams have on how they will work together to boost efficiency and effectiveness. In my former workplace, we used to use ground rules all the time, but I've also been in a workplace in which we've had rules of discussion. Then, these are the rules that were suggested. We did not take any vote. We did not have what I would call consensus, but these are the rules that were developed and have been evolving. One, we need to align the public and private messaging. We need to be consistent. We cannot say or provide a meeting on social media or in a council meetings or even in the School Committee meetings, and then give some other message at another time. We need to be consistent in our messaging. Two, we need to lead by example. We have to set the tone for interactions with each other and the community. The community expects us to be professional. They expect us to be respectful of each other. Likewise, if we do that, they will come to know that we are a council that will take seriously their comments and feedback, and we mean business. Next, we need to provide education to each other and then educate the community. It was interesting to hear how School Committee members mentioned that they really don't understand how the budget is developed. And Mr. Wasika has determined that he is going to offer some Budget 101 sessions on one of our free Saturdays, so that people in the community will better understand how budgets are developed. It's not just a discussion of what's the 21-22 budget, but how do we go about developing budgets? What's the ground rules? How do we start doing this? Another rule was suggested is to be professional and polite in public interactions with each other and in private interactions. In other words, we could say no backstabbing. Another rule was respect the role and responsibilities of each team who have powers and authority, as defined by the Coventry Town Charter, and have the authority to manage their own budgets. I mean, just yesterday, I talked to a constituent, and he was talking about, well, why can't this, why can't the school do this and that, and why don't you do something about it? And I said that the council cannot interfere with the operations of the school, and I recommended how he would be able to get his positions addressed. So we need to respect each other's roles and responsibilities. We also need to provide rationale and ownership for decisions. In other words, when we make decisions about supporting the right, the proposal going to ride, when we support decisions that will come up in the agenda, we need to be able to explain why we are doing something so the public has a clear understanding of what we're doing. We're working toward transparency. We're working toward building trust with the members of the community, and this is an extremely difficult thing to do, but we're all committed. I know that each member of the council is committed to do that. And next, we want to ensure that both teams are aware of proposed decisions affecting each other before these decisions are announced to the public. So I expect that this set of rules is going to evolve over time. It's a starting point. It's things that we want to do, and we want to be able to be proud of all the work that we do. So the council leadership is honoring these rules. We are sending out calendars, heads up our meetings, and we're collaborating on planning. In the time prior to the referendum on January 21st, 2021, council members made an all-out effort to support the budget. Ms. Ludwig initiated an ad and a reminder to remind people to vote. The council members did not use public money for this ad. Our members, Mrs. Shockley, Mrs. Ludwig, Mr. LeBlanc, and your president, will use social media postings to support the referendum, and we ask people to vote. So we are doing what we said we would do. The council does not believe that it will agree with the School Committee on every initiative, but we are dedicated to working together. Now, Ms. Ludwig was present at the meeting, and I'd like to ask her if she would like to make any comments about the two meetings that we had.
Thank you, President Dixon. So admittedly, the first meeting was a bit tense, and I think that everyone has had a really tough year. We've had three budgets that have failed. And so I think that was absolutely needed for us to talk about how to work together. So I thank you for the opportunity to participate. In the second meeting, I feel like the group put forward the ideas that you just outlined with clear heads, with commitment, and it's something that we wanted to bring forward and share with our groups and get support from the full, for example here, the full council. So I think it's important that we get full council support, whether we need to discuss these in detail or provide examples. From my side, I was supportive and participative, and I'd like to make sure we give the chance to Councilmember Shockley and LeBlanc as well.
Thank you. Mr. LeBlanc, comments?
No, this is the first that I'm hearing of these meetings. So I appreciate you at least sharing the details, but no comments to add right now.
Okay, Mrs. Shockley?
I would just thank you for speaking with each other and putting this forth. I think we're lucky in that we're all coming in as far as our relationships with each other as a clean slate. I'm excited to work with this council and with the School Committee to present a budget that is fair, what's necessary, and that we can all strongly support if asked by a member of our community.
Thank you. I will send this list off to members of the councils. You all have access to the complete list for informational purposes. I was very pleased that your council was able to be, along with Mr. Wasika, proactive in bringing together people and really being able to share concerns that they've had. We want to go forward. As I said before, we're not going to agree even among ourselves on every issue. We're not going to always agree with the School Committee and the leadership there, but we want to really commit ourselves to a positive relationship and be a very, have a very productive relationship. So I wanted to share with you. We had also discussed having joint meetings together, but Mrs. Patno did discuss this with the School Committee, so I felt it was important that we put it on our agenda also. So if you would like to vote on this, or you just feel we can continue the way we've been going informally with the upper leadership, we can do that. So we can talk about that at another time. But I wanted to share the information about this meeting and what has come out of it. We actually only met for a total of about two and a half hours, for two meetings, about two and a half hours. So it was very quickly discussed, but thoughtfully discussed. So we weren't at this days or weeks. Mr. Wasika, any comments that you have, because you were present at both meetings?
I truly believe it's a good step in the right direction. I'm looking forward to the process moving forward, and it's always better to do it when we're holding hands instead of fighting. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, ready to move on? Madam Clerk, please read Agenda Item D1. Is Mr. D'Agostino available? Thank you.
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read Agenda Item D1.
Discussion on Resolution Requesting General Assembly Approval of Proposed Amendment for Island General Laws 44-5-2 to Allow Growth to Levy.
Thank you. This is your reference pages four through seven. Mr. D'Agostino, could you discuss this resolution with us and give us more information, please?
Yes, if you'd just bear with me just a moment to open up my reference page here. Give me one minute. I apologize, my computer. Can I, can I ask the Town Manager to forward me the packet? Because I can't access, something on my computer is not letting me open up this as a PDF.
All right. I can explain what's going on on this if you'd like. I mean, it's a very simple...
I know, I know. I mean, I know we're looking to, we're looking to be able to, we're looking to be able to increase the levy. This dates back to the Senate 40-4030, the cap, but I don't want to misspeak on this. So if you want to address it, Ed, and then any legal questions, I'm happy to jump in.
Okay.
I'm going to send it to you, I'm going to send it to you, Dave, in two seconds.
Okay. I apologize to the council for my technical issue here.
No problem.
All right, Dave, I just sent you the, I sent you the resolution in the ordinance. What this is, is we're looking to allow the organic growth that occurs every year in assessed values of properties, new development that goes on. Right now, what happens is, when we start a new budget, and we've had all of this growth, we have to reset our levy back down to the previous year's number. And I've got a little example that I'm going to show, and I think this might help to explain what's going on, what we're trying to do with this. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at, all the way over on the left-hand side, you see the first column, and this is the residential real estate. It's got a, an actual net assessment, this is from a year and a half ago, of $2,197,124,450. And what happens, based on the tax rate of 2224, it generates a levy for residential property of $48,864,048. When you combine that with all of the other property types, the commercial, the frozen, as well as the personal property, you get the levy cap from that year, and in this case, it was $72,107,000. What happens is, during the course of a year, we get growth, we'll get a, we'll get a development go online. And what I've done is, I've actually pulled the numbers from some of the developments that we've got in play, and I'm going to use one from Tallwoods. So Tallwoods will actually generate $27.9 million, $27.9 million in new assessment. So if you look over, you'll see the new levy, based on that same tax rate of 2224, now produces a levy of $49,484,554, or a total levy of $72,727,868. A net change to the town of $620,000. That's new taxes that would come in without changing the tax rate at all. The problem with 4452 is, it says, when you look down here at this levy increase, the .86, or nearly a .9% levy increase, we have to go out to the citizens and say, look, it, we need to generate the 620. We can't, we can't keep this money. We have to reset this back down to last year's total, which is the 721. If you look over to here, you'll see what happens is, we artificially decrease our tax rate by 28 cents to bring that back down, so we're back in line with the previous year. So we've gone and lost this money, and we have to go back and ask the public for it. Even though we've already gained it, it's in our system. We haven't done anything to increase taxes. We have to go and ask for that. And we're losing that money. So all we're saying is, we let the organic growth go. You take the previous year's levy, the new organic growth in the levy, and then you start your cap based on that number. So that growth that happens because of development, because of improvements to houses, we get to keep, and then your starting begins from that number. Same way that Prop 2.5 works in Massachusetts. So you keep the organic growth added to the previous year, and that's your base that the cap comes from. So instead of 4% on $72,107,000, you actually have a cap of 70, from 72,727. So you're getting to keep that, and then you go for the cap. So it's a very simple change, but allows the communities to not have to keep going out for these maximum numbers. You get to keep what you've already, what's already come into play and not have to ask for it back. So our ask would be much smaller. And let me slide this over a bit and just show you an example. If I put in and had a budget now of $2.5 million, I'm only simply going to be asking for actually 1.8 million. Even though the budget increased by 2.5, I'm only going to need to ask for 1.8, because we've already got this. So it doesn't, we're not making, not that we normally go for 2.5, but I'm just using that higher number. That would be about a 2.5% increase on the, on the total amount of levy off of that. So it's all it is. It's just a cleaner way of asking for it, letting us keep the old money that we got. I'm still working on... I'm still working on cleaning this and getting a better way of showing it. It's a complex thing, and it gets a little convoluted when we bring it down. So I'm still working to clean this up a little bit more before we have our legislative session on the 17th. But that's all it works. I'm simply saying, let us keep this and let our cap go from that total amount and not losing that and resetting back.
Okay.
Dave, did I cover it?
You did. It's a way to try to capture your growth and build that into the levy. The 4% doesn't change, but 4% of what is is what you're is what you're capturing. You're capturing more value, if you will, from the growth in the town.
Correct. We're just simply saying, let us keep the growth and add that to the base before we go for the cap.
Okay, questions for them. Thank you. Questions for members of the council. Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you, President Dixon. A couple of questions. Do we know if other towns have passed similar resolutions?
No, that's why we're going to be hitting our if if you pass this, we'll be hitting up our legislators on the 17th, and we will also be sending this out to the other communities like anytime one community passes something like this, they send it out to the others, and hopefully the others will come on the bandwagon and join it. This is a win-win for everybody. We're all in the same boat. We're all pushing this towards our 4% caps every year because we're all losing that natural or organic growth that occurs in towns. All we're simply saying is let us keep it, then go for the cap and do what Mass does.
We probably should. If this passes tonight, we probably should push it out to the League of Cities and Towns as well.
I will do that.
This. Yeah, this is a major initiative.
Correct.
Another question I have is how would increasing the levy impact a homeowner that's been in this town 10, 20 years when the next revow is to happen?
The revow is the same way. You would you would work based off your original, and then any growth would come in after the fact. It's it's there's gonna there's going to be. The bottom line is we're never going to get more money than what we're asking for and what we need. So you're you're not going to really have any adverse effect because you're still asking for this. You're going to use the same amount of total revenue, but you're not asking for all of it from the taxpayers because it's already come in with those new properties that have come online. So the increase you're going for is actually a smaller increase on the way it would would work out.
So so I think said differently or asked differently. Is there any negative impact to an existing homeowner in this town if we were to pass this resolution?
It's not going to. It's it's
no.
No, it's not going to change anything on on the rates or any of that. No, it won't.
Okay, right. I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
And in your revows, you always get the leveling across, you know, people have probably experienced this. Sometimes in a revow, the evaluation may go up, their neighbor's valuation may go down because of how the because of how it's leveled across all properties across the entire town. But this this particular resolution change, if it's passed, isn't going to really impact the 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 valuation or a revaluation process. They're they're slight. It's slightly diffuse from what the issue is on the levy. And and we're just trying to capture more of the growth before we add the 4% to the levy.
I understood.
Or take 4% of the levy.
I appreciate the additional information. Thank you. That's all I have.
Members of the council, Ms. Ludwig.
Thank you. So I just wanted to understand the the growth. So for example, Mr. Rosika, in the Excel that you were just showing with some of those residential neighborhoods, are we suggesting that it's growth from business and residential or just from new homes coming online? Can you just clarify that?
No, it would. It would be any growth. If it if it comes in under commercial, it'll be under the commercial side. If it gets residential, it will become under the residential. We get a combination of both every year. So you would be keeping all of that that occurs and hopefully we'd be keeping all of that that occurs before we start doing your cap numbers. So yeah, it happens both sides.
The second item I have less of a question, more of a statement, I guess. I have seen a few things floating around online where people are alleging that we're suggesting this because we want to get more money or increase the levy. So it sounds like we're not asking for an increase in the levy itself. What we're asking to do is allow for new growth to be part of the future budget. And in reality, we would likely need to ask for less.
Exactly. That's the whole purpose of this. Let me go back to that slide for a second, and I'll show you what happens. Like, as I said, right here with Tallwoods, if you look at Tallwoods and you look at the effect, if that all came online in one year, that's $620,000 of additional taxes from that property, not from the rest of the residents, but simply from that property. We don't keep that from that property. Now, we reset back and go to the levy. The theory is it will reduce your tax rate for everybody. The reality of it is we still going to go and get that money back, so it goes back up and above. So we're losing that. This comes directly from that new property, that new project, and not coming from everybody. We then go and ask for the additional that's needed, and that gets shared by everybody else.
Mr. Rosika, I think you had mentioned that this was put into place about seven years ago. Is that right?
Correct. When Piva Weed Senate Bill 3050 is what changed this. It used to be based on the tax rate increase. And if you look at the 620 is still generating that 620,000 we grew. It's still only being generated by that 2224 tax rate. There's no change in the tax rate. That's simply the new development adding this revenue, excuse me, the taxes to the town, spendable cash to the town, without adding any new tax rate. It's a 0.86% levy increase, but we haven't done anything to increase that. It's just simple natural growth. And all I'm saying is let's keep the natural growth. Let us go back to the way it used to be. It's based on the tax rate and the increase on that, not on on the thing. You can still work a 4% cap on the levy, but basing on the new levy that's generated by the growth and the old levy combined. As I said, the same way Mass Prop 2 and 1/2 does.
If I may, Council President, a simple a simple way of looking at this is the to the actual change in the language of the of the statute. So the the way the statute currently reads, you can increase taxes by 4% of last year's of last year's levy. But last year's levy is 12 months earlier. And and that's that's where the town and all cities and towns are losing the growth in the 12 months. So so this just allows the growth from last year's budget to this year's budget to be included when you apply the 4% cap. So the cap remains, but instead of having to take instead of applying the cap to to the budget that was 12 years prior, 12 months prior, you actually apply the the cap to your your right up current ratable property.
So we're basically just catching up in this in a way. In other words, instead of looking back and losing 12 months of potential taxes, we have that which we can use in our calculations.
That's correct.
So I've noticed a lot of of comments on on social media where people residents are going, why do they need more taxes? Look at all the development that's going on. All these new houses have got to be generating more revenue for the town. They don't understand. It doesn't. It simply resets back to last year's levy. It produces not dime one of additional money. In a typical case, that's $620,000. Instead of going to the say we had a $2.5 million increase and needed between the school and the town, we have to go and ask the citizens for a $2.5 billion increase. By allowing us to keep the growth, we're going to be asking for 1.8 million and change, not the 2.5. So the percentage we asked for was smaller, and it the town sees the growth that occurs. They get to use the growth that occurs. But now we lose it.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Just a quick comment there on the new development, Ed. Aren't we bringing in additional revenue because it impacts fees, though?
We do get that on impact fees. That's a separate issue from this. The impact fees obviously are not part of our operating expenses. So we don't. We don't. Yeah, it comes in and it's used in other areas, but that's a one-time fee where these are actually affecting our, like I said, our levy year after year.
Okay. Thanks for the clarity.
Mr. D'Agostino and Mr. Rosika, I mean, everything that's been presented tonight sounds, you know, like, why aren't we doing this? But my question is, what kind of pushback would we expect from the assembly? In other words, we're doing something that no one else has asked for yet. We want to gain support for it. What's the pushback? What do we have to be prepared to respond to in order to get this through the assembly?
I I personally, I think what you're going to see this year, because we're already being advised that, and I sent out an email to everyone today, that the the aids to cities and towns is probably not going to be what's been going on in the the previous years. We're already being advised that expect cuts, substantial cuts. All I'm asking for is to say, let us keep our growth, our natural growth, so we can at least absorb some of what's going on. And a cover we we're looking at facing losses from the state. We can't continue to lose this revenue that they reset back and make us go back out and ask for. Again, with the reduced tax rate, it doesn't do it because you're still going to get that money back in for the natural occurring increases that go go on any budget.
So you know, my question, if I rephrase it, what would any of our state senators or reps say that would be negative about this proposal? What would we anticipate? Nothing?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's I would. I would suggest I don't think you're going to see a lot of pushback. And the and the reason I would suggest that is, you know, the 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 leadership at the General Assembly has has shifted. And certainly, when when Teresa Piva Weed was the Senate President, I don't think you would see this type of bill going through. But she's no longer the the Senate President, so that legacy, I think, has has passed. The other thing is, as Ed mentioned, is, you know, every municipality in this state and probably across the country is looking at a potentially devastating fiscal 22 because of the COVID situation from last year. And this is a mechanism that doesn't have a cost to it in in the sense of it's basically allowing all cities and towns to capture the growth from the previous 12 months back to the last, you know, budget session and and account for that in the in the new budget without increasing the levy. So I don't think that there's I don't think there would be a lot of pushback because you're not asking to change the 4%, which I think, as you know, in the statute, there are only certain limited reasons why you can exceed 4%. And generally speaking, the Department of Administration and Municipal Finance will not allow you to go above 4% absent some catastrophe. And COVID, I don't think, is going to qualify as a catastrophe because it affects everybody in the state.
Thank you. Questions from council members? Mrs. Shockley?
So I am happy that both Mr. LeBlanc and President Dixon asked about possible negative impacts and possible pushback. But I do wonder, conversely, is anyone has anyone legislatively said they're willing to take take this on? I feel often what happens legislatively is that if no one sponsors and truly supports a bill, it just gets lost in the shuffle. People don't want to give up political capital. So.
If this gets approved tonight, if you pass the resolution, then I will be contacting all of our local delegates. I will be sending it down to them, asking them for support and also to and to propose the the bill or the change to the bill. But I want it before I try doing it.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Sorry, I went unmute. I wonder if we could wait maybe just two weeks before we pass this resolution, only because we do have the the meeting scheduled for the 17th of this month. And we are asking, Member Shockley just asked, would somebody be willing to take this bill on at the state level? Because this is not just Coventry specific. This would be a state change. And I also, President Dixon, you were asking, what pushback would they be giving us? So rather than us making a decision, it might be beneficial to have a discussion with them first to see what their pushback would be and why. And then we could have a more educated decision made. Just wanted to suggest it.
I think it's a very good suggestion because I actually have it as a question I want to pose to the council. This item is under Resolutions for Discussion and Action, so we could vote on it this evening. We could also vote on it during the legislators' meeting, and that would be maybe very impactful. And I've already engaged with a discussion with the school committee chair to see if she would be willing to have her school committee vote on this resolution at the legislators' meeting so that there would be two bodies voting on this resolution before the people who represent Coventry, plus, of course, other communities. And then we could then ask the question, who can take this on? What do you suggest? What's the most impactful way we can proceed along with this? So the council tonight has the choice. We can vote on this this evening, and Mr. Rosika has a plan to move forward. Or we can wait really just about a little over two weeks and take the vote at the legislators' meeting and also try to get the school committee, because it is a joint meeting, to be on board with this resolution because it does affect them too. So it's, you know, I'm leaving it up as a choice for the council. Your pleasure. Vote this evening, or do we want to just vote on the resolution at the legislators' meeting, which is the 17th?
I agree with with President Dixon. I think it'd be much more impactful on the vote on that night. But in the meantime, if you have no objections, and I'm not asking for a vote, I will contact our local delegation or and see if they're interested in moving forward with this with to assist us, if that's okay with the council.
That's that sounds like a good idea. I also had engaged with three legislators just to give them heads up that we were having a meeting on the 17th. And they indicated to me that they don't participate as well as we would like them to because they they show up at a meeting, and then people are bombarded with all kinds of questions. They they don't have any heads up. And this is one of the things that we could do. We could send a draft of this resolution so that they have the heads up. They're prepared to respond to questions. It's not like something that's coming out of the blue to them. So that's a very reasonable suggestion.
There is also a an item on Monday's agenda for just such that just for that to come up with the questions in the areas that we want to go on and not bombard them with 60 areas. We need to focus on 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 two or three maximum primarily financial and backing what needs to be done on that. And that's it. And deal with that subject, budget and budget effects. Just my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the council? Mrs. Ludwig?
So we just went over the rules of engagement about 30 minutes ago, and we said we would work on transparency and communication with the school committee. So it does sound like a good idea. Thank you for suggesting, Mr. LeBlanc, and I am supportive of waiting.
And as I mentioned before, I've already approached the chairperson of the school committee to give her a heads up to see if she might be interested in engaging in a vote on this resolution with the school committee present at that legislative meeting. It was an exploratory question. It's part of our rules of engagement. Let's include our partners in some of the decisions that we want to make and use them to help strengthen the work that we want to do. So if I can have just consensus, if you could raise your hand if you're willing to wait for a vote until the 17th, and we'll put it on the agenda. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please read Agenda Item Number D2?
Resolution. Resolution to approve interim acting town manager contract.
Okay, to put this on the the table, may we have a motion and then a second, and then I'll make a statement to the public so they understand what we're trying to do. So may I have a motion for this resolution?
Make a motion.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, we want the members of the public to, to really understand what the council is trying to do by offering the contract to our interim town manager. The council is seeking to approve a contract for our interim acting town manager, which will ensure continuity of municipal government. While we are searching for a permanent town manager. The council also wishes to work more efficiently and effectively in reaching its goals. We have many critical projects that need dedicated resources. Once we have a permanent town man- manager, we will ask Mr. Rozika to assume the position of administrative officer. And work at the direction of the council on projects that need dedicated resources, and I will list those projects in just a couple of minutes. Mr. Rozika will retain the same town benefits he has now and be allowed to carry over unused vacation time and sick leave. He will continue to read the, receive the compensation he has now as interim town manager. Which is his IT director's salary plus the difference between the IT director's salary. And what the council had formally pegged for the town manager's salary, which was one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. This will be a limited contract of up to two years with an opportunity, except for cause, to terminate the contract by either party with up to thirty days' notice. If approved, the signed contract will be posted on the town website. These are some of the projects which we would assign to Mr. Rozika in his role as administrative officer. Uh, one, he would oversee, continue to oversee the IT department. Two, he would orient the new town manager to the operations of the town and to the people and staff who work for the town. Three, he will institute a monthly financial reporting. Next, he will implement the solar project, which we have talked about for the former transfer station on Arnold Road. Next, he will plan and implement um work on the police pension. Next, he will be the liaison with WED developers who are responsible for the turbines and the solar farm in our community. Next, he will develop a senior tax freeze plan. Next, he will define and implement future plan for sewers in Coventry. And next, he will resolve, and this is a big issue, he will resolve the Johnson's Pond issues. So those are the activities that the council has identified. Of course, there may be changes between the time in which. Um, we hire our town manager, and most of these projects Mr. Rozika is already working on. But this ensures that he will have defined responsibilities as we go forward. Um, any other questions by members of the council? Okay.
President Dixon?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't bring your hand. Sorry.
It's okay. So not a question, but more of a statement. So um, as most everyone knows, the last several years, we've had uh Mr. Rozika as an interim town manager. Before that, we had a town manager unexpectedly leave and uh someone come in on a very short-term basis and then leave. And so uh, we've never done anything like this before on putting this together. Um, this is different than what we've seen in the past. Um, I want to thank uh President Dixon for suggesting and putting this forward. Um, we need a succession plan. Um, I think it's a good idea. I'm supportive of the terms, the projects that have been mentioned. It sounds like we need to do things differently if we want to see different results. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other members, Mrs. Shockley?
Yes, I'd also like to comment um just on the fact that um. As we move forward, most towns our size, from the feedback that we're getting. Would have had an assistant town manager, would have had someone else there um when a town manager came in. Right now, the projects this town has require someone with institutional knowledge of what's been going on, what's moving forward. Um, to lead the new town manager forward. So we are excited to be able to let the new town manager. Once we have that person in place, be able to come in, get started, and not have to um. Learn everything from the ground level, but have someone there to um bring them along. And hopefully help actually bring some of these projects to completion. Um, so. It's a large part of the reason that this position, I think, is so important to Coventry.
Thank you. Mr. LeBlanc?
Uh, just wanna make a couple of comments. Um, Mr. Rozika uh is an asset to this town. Uh, this contract, in my opinion, is, is necessary. Uh, for uh the institutional knowledge to be transferred. Um, Mr. Rozika has been our interim town manager. He's been our interim finance director. He's been our IT director. Um, whatever we need, uh, Mr. Rozika um has, has done the role. So um, it's very important that he stays on uh during this transition. And I, I just wanna say that I'm very appreciative of the fact that he, he does want to stay on. So um, those are my comments.
Thank you so much. Mr. Rozika, comments from you?
I'd just like to thank the council for uh the kind words. Uh. I don't know what else to say. Thank you. Uh. We'll do what we do and uh we'll move forward. That's what we've tried to do since I've been here, and we're gonna continue to do that and uh fix the issues that we've got. Bring us forward and uh take care of the problems. I look forward to a new manager.
Thank you. We're working, we're working on that very actively. The public needs to know.
Thank you. Vacation would be nice.
Yes, Mr. Rozika is gonna take a vacation as soon as we have a new town manager. He deserves it. Hopefully he'll take one a little bit sooner than that. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jennifer Lugway?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. The resolution passes. Mr. Rozika, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I think.
It, it's all, it's all good. It's all good for all the reasons that the members of the council mentioned. All right, um, and we, as we said, we will post the, so the signed contract on the website so people can see all the details. But basically, I provided all those in the statement that I made. We wanted to make sure that the public understands what we were voting on. And of course, the reasons why I, we are taking this action. So thank you. Uh, we've already discussed Item D three, uh, and now we're ready for E one. Madam Clerk, would you please read that?
First reading of Amendment to Article Ten, Earth Removal of Coventry Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you. Um, usually for a first reading, there are no statements made. The council simply has a, a copy of the resolution. But I just want to make a couple of opening statements. The first reading of this was actually October thirteenth, twenty-twenty, so that was a few months ago. But it was determined that the second reading had not been advertised appropriately. So there were a series of continuations, then postponed it to December seventh, when it was determined that the summary of the ordinance amendment was not adequate for posting. Or, so we cannot, if, we could, cannot accept amendments to this ordinance at, as it is, as this is advertised as a reading. Amendments may be made by the council at the second reading, and also we can receive comments from the public at the second meeting. Um, Mr. Goran prepared the summary, which is in the um, which will be posted in newspapers. So that way the public will be um advised to what this ordinance does cover. Um, in general, it seeks an amendment to Article Ten of the Coventry zoning ordinance. Which was previously established by the zoning board of review as the reviewing authority for the granting of a special use permit for earth removal operations. In general, uh, the proposed amendment includes that all order, town ordinances at the, the time of renewal of a special use permit. Shall apply to the renewal. It says the notification area for a special use permit for earth removal shall be set at twelve-hundred feet. From the property boundaries of the earth removal operation. The summary also includes information that all special use permits granted for earth removal so, shall be subject to review by the zoning board. Within six months of the start of each earth removal activity. It also states that all special use permits shall be effective for a maximum of two years. The summary also includes that the buffer area for earth removal operations from an occupied dwelling has been increased from six-hundred to one-thousand feet. And the proposed amendments include the authority of the zoning board to place limitations on the hot, height of stockpiled materials. Require the materials and access roads to be watered as needed. And reduce or eliminate dust, and to require the construction of buffers and or fencing from the earth removal operations. And lastly, the proposed amendments provide for the protection of excavation that is part of an existing and established agricultural operation. Or is otherwise protected under Rhode Island General Laws two, twenty-three, one. And what follows, and also known as the Right to Farm Act. I'm simply giving you the highlights from the summary that is going to be published. And you can, of course, look at this and be prepared to ask any questions or make any amendments you wish during the second reading. The date of the second reading has not been set yet. Okay? So usually, as I mentioned before, at the first reading, we don't say anything, but I've sat on councils and, and even school committees when we've had first readings. And I really didn't have any highlights about what, what an ordinance was and what we had to vote on. So I wanted you to just have the highlights this evening. Okay, Mr. Rozika, we're ready for um Item F, public comment. You're on mute, Mr. Rozika.
Thank you, ma'am. If uh, anyone would like to speak on any of the topics tonight, uh, please raise your hand, and I will bring you into the meeting. We currently have fifteen attendees still with us. And uh, going once, anyone for public comment going twice? One last time, public comment. No response, ma'am.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed. Do I have a motion to adjourn at eight-thirty-six?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Uh, you're on mute.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jennifer Lugway?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at eight-thirty-seven PM. Thank you all. We had a great productive meeting this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.